First order of business, can I get a roll call, please?
Chairman Hume.
Here.
Vice Chair Rose.
Here.
Commissioner Klob.
Here.
Commissioner Kimball.
Here.
Commissioner Everly.
Here.
Commissioner Pecow.
Here.
And Commissioner Flanders.
Here.
Okay, we have a full commission tonight. Next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. If Commissioner Flanders could lead us, I'd appreciate that.
First order of business, can I get a roll call, please?
Chairman Hume.
Here.
Vice Chair Rose.
Here.
Commissioner Klob.
Here.
Commissioner Kimball.
Here.
Commissioner Everly.
Here.
Commissioner Pecow.
Here.
And Commissioner Flanders.
Here.
Okay, we have a full commission tonight. Next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. If Commissioner Flanders could lead us, I'd appreciate that.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Flanders. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from Wednesday, October 2nd. Do I have any corrections, changes, or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 2nd.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Rose, I have a second. Second, second from Commissioner Klob. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is our consent items. Staff, if you would like to start with item A, please.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Item A is PLH 190020, multi-tenant retail center on Dobson Road and Jermaine Road. This is a request for preliminary development plan approval, amending the site layout and building architecture for a multi-tenant retail pad. The approximate 1.65 acre site is located at the northeast corner of Dobson and Jermaine Roads. Item B is on action. Item C is on consent, which is PLH 1924, Church of the Cross. It's a request for preliminary development plan approval for the expansion of a church campus and amending the previously adopted master plan. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of the Santana Freeway and Dobson Road. Item D, PLH 1939, amended Dobson Cove, which is a request to amend the preliminary development plan for 27 single-family homes by revising the housing product and side yard setbacks. The subject development is generally located around the northeast corner of Dobson and Elliott Roads. Item E is PLH 1922, Mexico, Magico, and Cantina. It's a request for an entertainment use permit approval to continue to allow indoor live entertainment. The restaurant is located at 474 West Ray Road, which is east of the northeast corner of Ray and Iowa Streets. And there are two conditions that were added by the planning commission during study session. Condition number six will read, hours of entertainment shall be limited to 7:00 PM to midnight Friday and Saturday, and 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Sunday. And condition number seven will read, the entertainment use permit shall remain in effect for three years from the date of city council approval. Continuation of the entertainment use permit beyond the expiration date shall require reapplication to and approval by the City of Chandler. And item F is the cancellation of the November 6, 2019 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. With that, that concludes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council, from the commission, sorry, from the commission on any of the consent items? To the audience, we'll be going on one motion on the items that were read into the record. Item B, which is the Ferguson Enterprises, will be heard in a full hearing. But is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on the other items that are on the agenda? If not, then I will entertain a motion from the commission.
I'll make a motion to pass a consent agenda with the items read in by staff.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Pecow, so I have a motion from Vice Chair Rose, a second from Commissioner Pecow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, item B, Ferguson Enterprises. Staff, if you'd like to start the presentation.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Item B, PLH 19-0042 and PLT 19-0040, Ferguson Enterprises. This is a request. There's four components to this request this evening. The first is a rezoning from agricultural AG1 district to planned area development for planned industrial I1 uses with office, outdoor storage of material and equipment, and ancillary showroom and retail, with a mid-rise overlay allowing for building heights up to 50 feet, and a preliminary development plan for site layout and building architecture, as well as a preliminary approval. It's important to note, when this request was advertised within the newspaper, the uses were different. At the time of advertisement, we were requesting I2 type uses. Further in my presentation, I'll go into, you know, why we changed them. The memo and agenda and my presentation are reflected, the new proposal of I1 type uses, as well as office, outdoor storage of materials and equipment, and ancillary showroom and retail. The property is approximately 48 acres, and it is located west of the southwest corner of McQueen and Queen Creek Road. To the east of the property is an approximately 97 acre city facility for solid waste treatment facility, as well as a water treatment and a solid waste recycling facility. South of the property, there's two properties that are currently within Maricopa County. There's one residential home on it. Just south of that is vacant land that the city recently acquired to expand future facilities at a future date. West of the property is Hamilton Street. It's currently not improved. West of Hamilton Street is a property that's currently zoned planned area development for I1 type uses and office. That occurred in 2013. South of that is a plant nursery that's located within Maricopa County. North of the subject site is Queen Creek Road, and north of that is vacant property that is yet to develop, currently zoned agricultural. When reviewing requests, rezoning requests, we must see if the plan is in compliance with any general plans or area plans. Our most recent general plan was adopted and approved in 2016. The site is designated as employment within a growth area. Employment allows for major employers, industrial business park, and industrial uses. As part of that growth area, there are areas that are specifically targeted to design, designed to support economic growth. There's six different growth areas within Chandler. This site happens to be within the Chandler Airport growth area. Upon further research of the subject site, I staff found a general plan dating back to 1982. Within this plan, it called out certain areas as special land use areas. In 1982, this plan specifically stated, the area surrounding the airport is planned to be one of the principal industrial concentrations in Chandler. So this vision was established in 1982. The airport, fun fact, actually opened in 1946. Fast forward to today, the property falls within our Chandler Air Park area plan, which was adopted and approved in 1998. The Chandler Air Park area plan is nine square miles large. It's bounded by Arizona Avenue to Gilbert Road, north of Pecos to Ocatillo Road. The Chandler Air Park area plan, when planned, or pardon me, when we were in the process of reviewing it in 1997, there were four elements that were studied within this plan. We reviewed different types of land uses, transportation and circulation, infrastructure, and economic development. It was stated, within the introduction of the Chandler Airport, Air Park area plan, it's represented the last great chance for economic development within the City of Chandler. This plan was used to guide for future development within the surrounding area of the airport. The subject site is designated as industrial. If you look at the Air Park area plan, there's a mix of uses permitted, or envisioned for the future development. It includes a mix of residential densities, commercial, office, business parks, as well as some general commercial, industrial, open parks, and city facilities. This property is designated as industrial. There, if the, within this Air Park area plan, the boundaries from the train tracks east to McQueen, from Willis Road, south to Ocatillo, a majority of this land is envisioned for industrial uses. You'll see two different purples. The first is a light purple, which is, they tend to be smaller industrial users, light industrial, where the dark purple tends to be, allows for more intense and larger industrial type development. The subject site is designated as industrial, and is in compliance with the Chandler Air Park area plan. All right, so to the proposal. For the request, the property is requesting to be rezoned to PAD, that's Planned Area Development, for I1 type uses, including office, outdoor storage of material and equipment, and ancillary showroom and retail. The property will be developed within two phases. The first would be a 362,880 square foot building with outdoor storage. As part of Phase 1's improvements, half-street improvements along the west side of the property for Hamilton Street would be provided. All landscaping, parking, would be completed along Queen Creek and along Hamilton, along the development of the first phase. The second phase would come at a later date, and it would be an expansion of the existing building, then pushing the proposed outdoor storage area further to south of the property. Ferguson is a supplier of building materials. They're a national company. I know the applicant plans to go into further on the operations of Ferguson. Also, as part of the request, they are requesting a mid-rise overlay allowing for heights up to 50 feet. The building is one-story, however, the ceilings are high. When you actually look in the booklet and in this exhibit, actual top of parapet is measured to 46 feet, and that's used to screen all roof-mounted equipment. Only a small portion of the building is increased to 50 feet, and that would be the embellished Ferguson entry along the north side of the property, along Queen Creek. A mid-rise overlay is required for buildings exceeding 45 feet in height. The height is needed for this property due to the racking systems used to store the large plumbing equipment within the building. Here's a floor plan. As I said, Phase 1, the Phase 1 is approximately 388,000 square foot building. Of that building, a majority of it would be used for the warehousing and storage of material. The front of the building, along Queen Creek, they would have about 30,000 square feet of offices, as well as 10,000 square feet for display and sale counters, so people could come in and pick out a product, buy it there on site. The building does have a total of 83 dock doors, of which most are recessed and not at ground level or grade. As part of the request, a neighborhood meeting was held. Two were actually held due to the mid-rise overlay requires two neighborhood meetings. It was held at the airport on September 24th and 25th. At the first meeting, approximately 30 people showed up. At the second meeting, only four residents showed up. I was in attendance at the first meeting. Many concerns that were raised at this meeting included the intensity of the industrial uses, the difference between I1 type uses versus I2 uses, concerns about the area developing as an industrial hub, traffic, increased truck traffic within the area, as well as property, their property values. As a result of this meeting, the request was reduced from I2 to I1 type uses with three additional uses, which would require a use permit under I1, the use of an office, outdoor storage of equipment and material, as well as that retail showroom component of their proposal. As of writing the memo, staff received four phone calls and one email stating opposition to the request. As of today, I have been forwarded multiple emails from the mayor's office, as well as emails sent to me directly within the last 36 hours. I put in front of you all of the emails that were not attached to my memo. They are in front of you. All memos are in opposition to the request. Again, most of the concerns pertain to the intensity of the use, although, although many of the residents understand that it's envisioned for employment, you know, they would prefer to see office or commercial, retail, and so to, as part of taking these concerns, and we have reviewed them, so we took a look at the uses. Per how we advertised it, we were proposing that it would be I2 type uses, because when we look at the Air Park area plan, it does call out that darker purple, which would align for uses more akin to a I2 type uses. However, it was more in line with that plan. However, after further evaluation, I have a list of all of the uses permitted by right or with a use permit under I2. After further evaluation, you know, we agreed that these aren't desirable uses to have in that area, so we have since reduced the request to only allow for I1 type uses, as well as those additional uses. As part of the request, the applicant was required to submit a traffic impact study. Traffic did review it. This is an exhibit from it showing how traffic would exit the property. It's thought that a majority of the traffic would be reaching the property from the 202 by getting off on Arizona Avenue, heading south, and then turning into the property, being able to make protective right into the subject site. From there, when traffic leaves, this exhibit shows that half would either go to McQueen, or half would go back to Arizona Avenue to get back to the 202, with a small percentage taking Appleby back to Arizona Avenue. As part of that traffic study, our traffic engineer, our city engineer, reviewed it and stated the proposal will have minimum trips, thus not impacting the region. It's important to note that McQueen Road, as part of the Chandler Air Park area plan, was envisioned as one of the major arterials within that area. They called out specifically the area of the 202 and McQueen. Currently today, McQueen Road is built out to its max, six lanes, and it is fully capable of the proposal. Also, as part of the request under Phase 1, Ferguson, it will be completing half-street improvements along Hamilton Street. There's been a lot of issues brought up as part of this request in the last couple of months regarding the area south of the property. So this exhibit is actually at the southern border of the property. So south of there is Appleby Road, which isn't completely improved yet, it's a gravel road. South of that is Ocatillo. There has currently been a new development of the Chandler Unified School District busyard. Future plans for this area, this is a city document, you know, they, we've been trying to figure out how to improve the area. Per this plan, Pine Lake Way would actually extend north to connect up to Hamilton Street and up to Queen Creek. At one point, at some point, Queen Creek and Hamilton will be signalized. Through the traffic impact study, a traffic signal wasn't warranted, but the applicant will be in charge of a quarter of that cost, and at some point in the future, there will be a light there. So by improving the half-street of Hamilton, it would benefit the regional improvements of that area, help relieve some of that traffic from the bus barn. The request did go to Airport Commission last week on October 9th. Airport Commission reviews any properties within the Chandler Air Park area plan requesting to be rezoned to evaluate the request, to see if there's any conflicts with the existing or future use of the airport. This property is about a half a mile south and east, south and east of the runway, or pardon me, the runway is about a half a mile south and east, or north and east of the property. Airport Commission made a findings that no conflicts existed. Planning staff has reviewed the request, and planning staff recommends approval as the proposal is consistent with our general plan, consistent with our Chandler Air Park area plan. Stipulations have been added, especially stipulations regarding uses. It goes on to talk about how I1 type uses are permitted, as well as a stipulation was added stating, the use of a data center as a primary use shall be prohibited, as data centers are permitted under I1 type zoning, as well as additional stipulations. Planning staff is making a recommendation of approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff. Commissioner Kimball?
Lauren, thank you for your presentation, a lot of information. And forgive me if I missed some, a couple of questions I had on the outdoor storage with industrial usage, I guess I'm envisioning racks of pipes and tanks and all kinds of stuff. Is that what outdoor storage would be for this usage for Ferguson?
Through the chair, we could clarify with the Through the chair, we could clarify with the applicant. However, as it's been represented, no. The materials stored within the yard would not be on racks. They would be large, large underground pipes, not too large to actually bring into the building.
My second question would be, how many employees would they be employing here with this facility?
Great question. Ferguson plans to employ approximately 285 employees.
Thank you.
Lauren, can you just touch base real quick for me? Explain, you showed what I-2 uses are. I-1 is less intense uses, correct?
Chair, you're correct. I-1 tend to be light industrial, where I-2 allows for more intense industrial uses.
And you also stated that the land to the west of here has already been zoned back X amount of years ago. In 2013, it's already been zoned light industrial, which is basically the same as this use?
Chair, you're correct. In 2013, the property was zoned PAD for I-1 type uses, as well as office.
All right, thank you. Go to the applicant. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Commissioner Pecan?
Yeah, just to follow up on Commissioner. Commissioner Kimball's question about the employees, are they all that Ferguson is moving people over to this location? Out of those 285 people, how many are existing? And how many are new? I'm just curious about that.
Through the chair, Commissioner Flanders. That's a great question. Maybe we could, or we could address the applicant after their presentation.
Through the chair, Lauren, great presentation. Maybe broader question to Kevin. I am having crew's brain. I cannot remember. What percentage did the general plan pass in 2016? I know it was around 80%. I can't remember what the vote approval was.
Through the chair, Commissioner Pecan, great question. The, the general plan was approved and adopted and ratified and voted by the residents of Chandler at an approval rate of 85.6%. It was pretty high, to the point of where we actually received a reward for it.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, we're going to go to the applicant first. The applicant can state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Chair. Members of the commission, Brennan Ray, 702 East Osborne, here on behalf of Ferguson Enterprises. They are, Ferguson is the proposed developer, owner, and operator of this industrial warehouse and storage facility. We're certainly very excited to be able to present this to the city tonight. Picking up on some of the discussion that just took place, we are excited for the number of jobs that it will bring to the, to the city, jobs that didn't otherwise exist. In case you're not aware, Ferguson is a national company that specializes in a number of things. Primarily, their main business focus deals with plumbing, HVAC, waterworks, fire and fabrication, and facility supply. And we believe that this proposed building will have all of those various divisions of Ferguson that will be located within it. But in addition to being a national company, they focus on things locally, in that they provide and often do a lot of things to benefit the community, from educational outreach and participating in initiatives. The other thing that they do is they recruit locally. In terms of the people that they want to see in these type of facilities, they'll recruit locally from local high schools, tech schools, local colleges as well. In spite of that national presence, they very much believe in being part of the communities in which they're located. Certainly, this proposed development is the exact type of development and the use for this site that's adjacent to the city's solid waste and wastewater treatment facility. And it is, and I don't have the opportunity to say this too often, but this is 100% consistent with the general plan and airpark area plan. We've worked closely with planning staff to ensure that the design, the layout, the architecture is certainly consistent in keeping with the general plan and airpark area plan and appropriate for this area. And we certainly believe that this request is consistent with the joint meeting that the City Council and Planning Commission had a few months ago, where one of the topics of discussion I know was employment, and the need to protect employment and encourage that those areas developed as they have envisioned. And so, we are appreciative of staff's report, their presentation, and their recommendation for approval. We are certainly okay with all the stipulations contained in staff's report, and will request this body's recommendation for approval. There's a few things that I'd like to emphasize and just illustrate and talk about. In terms of the site, as Lauren indicated, it's 48 acres. It's that site that's outlined in purple, but it's certainly a unique site when you consider what's around. Those gray areas are city-owned facilities, with the airport being up to our northeast, with the city's wastewater treatment plant and future expansion to our east and south as well. And then you've got the green, the parks in the area, obviously with Paseo Vista Park south of us, tumbleweed on our north doesn't really factor in, but important there is its strong city presence. And then the future park that's due east, that wraps around that site. And so, it certainly, when we look in the context of the area, we've got a lot going on and a lot that's immediately adjacent to us that lends itself to this being the appropriate type of use for this development. This is a close-up of the site. I won't go into it much. Staff indicated in their report that they had a plan in 1982. They have better access to records than I do. I was able to find the general plan in 2008, and that's what this is. The site's outlined with the star and the circle. As you can tell on this, it's designated employment. And as staff indicated, under the 2016 general plan, it's employment as well. The airpark area plan, we know is consistent with it. The only thing I would draw your attention to specifically is the gray text box. And what that is, is that's taken straight out from the airpark area plan. It's been around for over 20 years and identifies and defines what industrial is envisioned for in terms of the site in the area. And the key things, you know, manufacturing, distribution, warehousing, wholesaling, utility, general industry, and stuff like that. And certainly, as staff presented, we are consistent with that type of proposal. Just for clarity's sake, in case it was unclear in terms of the phasing, this first area outlined in black, that's Phase One. That's going to have our main building. Our numbers are a little bit different than what staff presented. We believe there's going to be 40,000 square feet of office space, as well as probably ultimately 15,000 square feet of retail counter space up in the front. Phase Two, again, if it wasn't clear, that's the southern half, with north being to the right. That's where a future expansion will occur. One of the things I wanted to highlight, I know staff mentioned it, as this group is well aware, the development booklet that accompanies this rezoning is the Bible when it comes to the permitted land uses. And this section that I've highlighted backstops what staff was saying in terms of what we are proposing, in terms of uses. I wanted to get briefly into operations and talk about it. And if we've got questions about that, I can go into further details. But this kind of lays out the typical operations of what we would expect at this facility in hours of operation. Operates predominantly as a normal business. We, because of the construction nature of the clients that they serve, they're out a little bit early delivering stuff, allowing contractors to be able to come in and pick up some things. But you can see typically, you know, 5:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. is typically when this business operates. You'll see on the fourth bullet, four, I can count today, the fourth bullet point, that the warehouse, that stays open a little bit later. But what ends up happening is that is all uses that are, an activity that's contained within the building. It's loading the trucks for the next day's delivery. And then importantly, we're closed on Sunday. One of the things that we've discussed with, with staff and neighbors are the type of delivery vehicles that are used. And these are actual Ferguson trucks. The top one is a box truck. The one below that, an example of a stake bed truck. Wanted to put those out there because those two types of vehicles make up 90% of the deliveries that leave this site. And on occasion, we do have pickup trucks that do go out for hotspot deliveries and stuff like that. There are semis involved in this operation. We estimate that there's probably, on average a day, about eight semi trucks that come to this site delivering goods. A lot of it is, a lot of pipe. And to a question that was answered or asked earlier, that storage area is going to have a lot of pipe, whether it's cast iron, plastic, steel pipe, and it will be on rack systems back there. And those obviously come in on semis. We would estimate that, on average, we probably maybe have one semi truck leaving the facility a day to make deliveries. A few things on the site that I wanted to bring up that staff didn't mention. The blue dots, those are access points. Obviously, Hamilton Road is at the left-hand side of the screen. We do have a proposed full-access movement on the east side of the site. We have some secondary access points along Hamilton as well that I can get into. One of the things I wanted to specifically point out was the amount of separation that this building has from Queen Creek. You can see there in blue that this building is on purpose set back 264 feet, allowing us to provide a nice landscape frontage and to accommodate retention, as well as our operations. This is a perspective of that building, looking at it. This is another perspective. But we felt it would be important, and I'll spend maybe a little more time letting you look at this one, about what that would look like from the street as people are driving by. And this is a street-level view, looking southeast through the site, as to what we would expect and anticipate that residents would see as they drive through the site. From a building perspective, we do have walls. This is, we do have secured walls in the back and the front. And I wanted to put this up to show you, to understand that it is secure. We are providing an eight-foot wall along Hamilton and along Queen Creek Road, not immediately, but the purplish color, that's our eight-foot-high wall to secure the facility. Staff is correct in that we did have two neighborhood meetings. As we listened to some of the concerns that we heard as we were going through it, one of the first and foremost concerns that we had was frustration over a zoning case south of the southeast corner of McQueen and Queen Creek. And then, staff indicated industrial uses, the types, and traffic, and property values was another one. And I'm going to go through and respond to some of these concerns. I know that, I believe there are some neighbors here that I'm sure will be able to expand a little bit more on their concerns. But in terms of that first one, obviously, that's something that I don't have any control over. Neither does Ferguson. We weren't involved in that case, had nothing to do with it. But I know that that is, is sensitive to the residents. In terms of the industrial uses in the area, again, just to emphasize, this area's been designated for employment on the general plan for a long time, and for industrial uses under the airpark area plan for at least 20 years. And so, while we believe that there'll be some, some concerns about this being in a residential area, we would respectfully disagree of where this particular building is, with what's going on and surrounding it. The other one, dealing with the type of industrial uses that were permitted, I've already touched on this, but just wanted to emphasize and reemphasize what staff has said, in that initially, there was some conversation about I-2 uses. But after going to the neighborhood meeting and hearing the feedback, we realized, hey, look, probably not a good thing, I-1 uses with office and outdoor storage and retail, ancillary retail, we can live with that. And so, we did pair that request back. I wanted to touch on traffic, and I can go into more detail if this group would like, but this was taken from the traffic report that staff mentioned, that has been reviewed and approved by the city. This talks about trip generation. Obviously, as this group knows, important with trip generation is the amount of traffic that's generated during the AM and PM peak hours. And you can see that we're generating 120 trips in the AM and 130 trips in the PM, and 947 overall. Now, as you know, a trip doesn't mean that's going to be 120 vehicles or 130 vehicles. A trip is one movement of a vehicle. So when we analyze that, looking at what's on Queen Creek Road today, the amount of traffic that we are going to put onto Queen Creek amounts to less than 1% of an increase in the total volume. Queen Creek, as you know, is a six-lane, I won't call it superhighway, but it is a six-lane major arterial with a median in the middle of it. We then went and looked and analyzed what the impact would be on the intersections of McQueen and Queen Creek, as well as the intersection of Arizona Avenue and Queen Creek. And you can see that summary there, that the traffic that this will push through that intersection ranges between 1.06% and 1.2%. So call it 1%. And the reason for the varying that is is in, is due to the times of day with which we look at it. So again, here's where we're trying to get to. We think it's designed and appropriate for the building. Certainly, it is something that, again, I can't say all the time, but we are 100% consistent with the general plan, consistent with the airpark area plan. And we are, again, appreciative of staff's recommendation for approval. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions afterwards. And if needed, Chair would love the opportunity for rebuttal if, if time would allow, after some of the neighbors get up. But we would request this group's recommendation for approval.
Questions of the applicant? Commissioner Klob?
I have a couple of things. Is this facility going to complement Ferguson's other facilities? I know they have a showroom in Scottsdale and other, other locations throughout the valley. Is it going to be in addition to that? Or is this going to be replacing some of those?
Through the, through the chair, Commissioner Klob? Both, if I can answer it. There, the Ferguson's facility has a variety of different formats in different locations. There are some locations that are small, retail-only type locations, where people can come and pick up stuff. You know, you or I could walk in there and get a faucet, a toilet, or something like that. There is a space in, in Central Phoenix that they have outgrown quickly. And so, that space, at the appropriate time, would be vacated, and they would then be moved over to this facility at the appropriate time. To answer, if I can, a question that Commissioner Flanders asked, since we're kind of on jobs and relocating and stuff like that, we don't have an answer in terms of who's going to be coming over versus what's going to be a new job. I know that all 285 of these jobs, which is at full build-out, will be new jobs to the city of Chandler.
So, to that point, I've been to the Ferguson facility up in the Scottsdale Airpark. And understanding kind of how it runs, how it operates, is this going to be similar size, similar volume to, to that facility? Do you know?
Through the chair, if I may, let me speak with Marty Young, who's with Ferguson. He's a district manager. And so, let me see if I can answer that question. Chair, Commissioner Klob? A component of Scottsdale will be at this facility. That, as I understand it, is more of a retail showroom-type facility. This development, as well as staff indicated, will have a retail showroom-type component of it. Obviously, the majority use of this building is the warehouse and the storage yard component. But there will be that aspect of that Scottsdale building in this facility.
And I guess where, kind of where I was going with that is, Ferguson understands the, the overall use. This isn't a new, a new thing for them regarding traffic, trips, trucks, you know, that kind of thing. This is something that they've been doing for quite a while. I'm making an assumption.
Yes, through the chair, Commissioner Klob? Ferguson's been in operation for 65 years and have 1,400 locations throughout the country. And those range from very large, 1 million-square-feet-type distribution facilities. I believe the closest one of that scale is in Paris, California. And then they go all the way down to the small retail shops like the one up in Scottsdale.
The only other, the only concern that I've seen with this site, and I just want to make sure, concern I have is truck traffic on Appleby Road. And I know we just approved a housing development to the west of there, off of Arizona Avenue, and potential of, you know, other housing products being able to come in to some of that. And I want to make sure that we're not going to have large trucks coming and going on Appleby, may or may not even be able to accommodate it.
Through the Chair Commissioner Klob, I would probably defer to the city on Appleby Road and what it's designed to. As I think staff indicated in their report, this area, this corridor between Ocatillo, this is as good an exhibit there is. The area between Ocatillo, which is at the very south, and Queen Creek on the north, this whole little corridor west of the canal has been designated for employment-type uses. I believe staff talked about, and again, I'll defer to them, that there is a desire that there be connectivity north-south with Hamilton through this development, and I believe there is a desire for there to be connectivity out to Arizona Avenue through Appleby Road. But I would defer to staff on the scope and scale of Appleby Road.
My concern is more to the west of this property. But probably, I'd like to get some feedback in regards to the overall intent and direction from the city as well on that. So.
Chairman, long-term, this area, any area, is better served with more options, access options, than fewer. Presently, to the west of the subject site, it's dirt up until you get to the tracks. Laco Stera, I think, was the name of it, just proved west of the tracks. They'll be installing the north half of Appleby Road all the way out to Arizona Avenue. I don't anticipate that Ferguson trucks are going to be using the dirt road piece of Appleby that currently spans that, there's going to be the gap. Long-term, that will be paved, and there will be a city collector roadway. My hunch would tell me that the majority of the trucks are going to be going north and south to either Ocatillo or Queen Creek and not take Appleby. The extension of Appleby actually is to better serve the stuff on the west side of the tracks, to have a secondary bleed to get out if there is an avenue is backing up. So it's more of a regional circulation kind of concept and intent, and not necessarily for a single user to head one way or the other.
All right, thank you. Other questions to the applicant?
Brendan, quick question on the 285 jobs. In terms of the mix of jobs, I know there's salespeople in there, there's warehouse people. Do you have any comment on that? Chair, in terms of the type of jobs, and I know there's a component at the office, but those jobs within that office area, we'll call it, there is a wide range, from management being a district area and regional and local, a lot of management's going to be located in there. There are going to be sales associates, there's going to be people that are in charge of credit and operations. We will have outside sales and some admin as well. In addition to those jobs, there will be people working the retail counter, the retail space, so there will be counter people. We do have warehouse and then drivers as well. So it's a wide range, and we believe presents a kind of diversification of jobs that you could have in one location.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll go to the audience at this point.
Thank you.
So I'm going to go to the audience right now. I've got, I believe, about, I think, six speaker cards. The clerk, could you set the timer for three minutes, please? So. And not everybody's checked they want to speak. I'm going to start with Deborah Hoyle. Did you want to speak or opposed to the project? I know you referenced a letter that you have here. Did you want to speak? Okay, thank you very much. We've got your letter here on record. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't want to come up and speak, so. Okay, thank you very much. Ralph Fish, it says I'm opposed to the item. Did you want to speak? Okay, thank you. Salmid, I apologize, S-I-D-D-I-Q-U-I. You wanted to speak? If you can step, come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Salman Siddiqui, 1460 East Coconino Drive, Chandler 85249. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Before I get started with this proposed rezoning, I want us to take a look back as to what happened last year. We had 300 people that filled the council chambers to voice their opposition to the proposed warehouse by Ryan Companies. Over 1,000 people signed the online petition voicing their displeasure to the warehouse being built. Although the council voted against the warehouse, the planning commission allowed for the site to be built with few concessions, much to the dismay of the residents nearby. The same scenario is being repeated a year later. We don't need another distribution that will bring nothing but big trucks, more traffic to the area, and mostly non-professional jobs. The shell of Ryan Companies warehouse is already up with 400 proposed docks as part of the master plan. So I would urge the commission to look at this macroscopically as opposed to looking at it microscopically. Because if you look at it macroscopically, it's evident that nothing but trucks, traffic, and noise pollution is on its way. The traffic study last year estimated an increase of 2,000 vehicles, again, mostly trucks, traveling north and southbound of McQueen Road and spreading out to nearby streets such as Queen Creek Road, Arizona Avenue, Ocatillo, Chandler Heights, Riggs Road, all the neighborhoods that are situated on the path of the 587 onto the I-10 and 202. Now, there's a bus depot on Ocatillo Road, and the city has just purchased land to build another high school in South Chandler. Again, macroscopically, this is just bringing more traffic to the area. I understand that there's a plan in place that's promoting employment. If employment is what the city's after, then why not bring something that will benefit the community, such as other commercial, retail, or business offices? I would urge the city to seek alternatives such as bringing maybe an indoor/outdoor sports complex or high-end science and technology business offices, such as the Ribulon, which they have in Gilbert. What I don't understand is, the city has put up beautiful communities in South Chandler with some of the highest property values in the area. There is little wisdom or bad planning in putting up large warehouses and distribution centers near such neighborhoods. It just doesn't make any sense. We moved to Chandler to have our families live peacefully in beautiful communities with diverse neighbors that are highly educated. I sincerely hope that you will listen to the voices of the taxpaying citizens of Chandler and will recommend not to proceed with this rezoning request. We will work together to come up with ideas that will make better use of this land. Thank you.
Any questions to the speaker? Thank you, appreciate your comments. Next item, next person, I'm sorry. Claudia Blaze, would you like to speak? If you want to come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Claudia Blaze, 3533 South Senate Place, Chandler 85286. I'm in the Lantana Ranch community. I oppose, of course, the proposal by Ferguson Enterprises to rezone this agricultural parcel to either I-1 or I-2, and I guess it's I-1 now, but I oppose the industrial use at all. I was told a year ago, and I think it was by you, Greg, that the time to be involved in having a say of what gets developed in your community is during the rezoning application process. So here I am, along with a few neighbors. After an outpouring of community support against Ryan Industrial Project and a no vote from the city council members a year ago, Ryan Company came back with the city's blessing and are now building their massive mega warehouses right next to Lantana Ranch. The first has gone up, and it's not pretty. It serves as a reminder to me how the city turned its back on the community. Now, we have Ferguson Enterprises proposing a warehouse distribution center close by. Ferguson wants to take two of their warehouses from already industrial areas in Central Phoenix and consolidate them into a mega warehouse distribution center with outside storage in our community of Southeast Chandler, as you heard. In the city's wisdom, you plan for some of the most beautiful communities with the highest property values to be developed in Southeast Chandler, along McQueen and Ocatillo Roads. Now, you want to destroy that by allowing unsightly industrial warehouses to be built that will bring more trucks, causing potential safety issues, along with noise and pollution. We are already seeing the effects of this type of development from the FedEx Distribution Center down the street, down Queen Creek, as well as the new bus depot on Ocatillo Road. You and I know that as a general rule, industrial development belongs on the outskirts of the city, away from residential neighborhoods. I understand that the city's general plan that was adopted or approved in 2016 calls for this area around the airport to support employment or become an employment corridor. I think when this was adopted and approved by the city or the people, I'm not sure they understood what employment meant. I don't think they knew that it meant an industrial corridor. At least, I didn't. Although I'd prefer to see other land uses, I could be okay with employment use. That being said, employment use does not have to mean industrial development, which feels what the city seems to prefer. There are other employment uses that the city could consider that would benefit the community that is already established here, such as retail, business offices, just to name a few. In other words, something other than massive industrial warehouses or distribution centers would be preferable. So please consider and deny Ferguson's request and consider either alternative zoning or uses that will benefit the community here in Southeast Chandler. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to the speaker? Thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Next speaker I have is Paul Mesher. Would you like to come up and speak, sir? If you can come up and state your name and address for the record, that'd be great, please.
Paul Mesher, I live at 3276 South Diamond Drive, Chandler 85286, twin acres neighborhood just three-quarters mile east of the area. I came ready to talk about I-2 versus I-1. I am actually thrilled with the I-1 change. I understand the reality. I've looked at the general plan a lot of times, understood that industrial is part of the culture of what was trying to be built along railroad tracks. And as presented, the discussion of Ferguson in terms of traffic actually is interesting and relatively low impactful, and I don't disagree with what was said. My concern at this point, however, is, is we talk about industrial and we talk about the general plans and all the things, the one thing that's never stated in any of it is mass. That industrial can be anything from a 50,000-square-foot building to, and there isn't a top end. If you look at the building as proposed, eventually 500,000 square feet or nearly 500,000 square feet under a single roof, find that in Chandler, find that in Phoenix, find it in Mesa. It's in major, heavy industrial areas. The building is big, and in that, it invites a traffic conversation. The reality is, is that Ferguson is a business, and their business could change in the next 10 years, and they could decide they don't need that site and that building, and they could sell it. And if you look at what's going to come in as a general statement to a 500,000-square-foot warehouse, it's not going to be a few trucks and mostly inside and what Ferguson's doing. And so while I understand their business plan and how it feels that it fits, I'm very concerned that the size and mass of the building doesn't fit with the community that it's going into. And that long run, that could draw more similar that don't have that same view, and we end up with a large industrial warehouse area. I am one of the people who opposed what Ryan Properties did. I am frustrated that they looped it into existence. It is right outside my backyard. But I understand that the process allowed for it. I also understand that they understood and reduced the size of the buildings because they got the idea that it's too big for the community they're going into. I don't dislike Ferguson, I don't dislike industrial. I am concerned, and I would ask that the size of the building be limited and not approved in terms of how they presented it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions to the speaker? Thank you, appreciate your comments. The last card I have is for Lynn Becker, opposed to the item. Lynn, did you want to speak? Okay, Mr. Pose, thank you very much. That's all the speaker cards I have. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Ma'am, if you'd like to come up and state your name and address for the record, that'd be great, please.
Thank you for allowing the citizens to step in when we're still discombobulated from the last Ryan situation.
Ma'am, can you give us your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Susan Ellsworth, 3225 South Diamond Drive.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and this will be in my backyard. I just wanted to put on the record that when Ryan Companies had their PDP changed, it was indeed not a Bible. It can be changed, and there's a lot of worry that there's a possibility that if, for some reason Ferguson Company decides they don't want to be in there, like he said, the previous speaker said, then we're stuck with this massive building, and they can do anything with it because it's under I-1. We all saw the PDP that was approved by the people in this area. It was approved by the mayor then and the city council. And it was in a book, and it was beautiful, just like their book, but it is nothing, nothing, nothing close to what it is today. You have to hear us. If you didn't want this to be residential area, then the planning should have not brought these homes and let these residential areas be this close to what you're making industrial. I am very passionate about this because it does involve our homes. And if you don't think this is going to impact even Arizona Avenue, you're nuts. We have Hamilton High School right there, and they're going to take that shortcut from the I-10 right up Arizona Avenue, right where our children are driving to high school for their first time, and they're going to be competing with these semis. We have the elderly in Sun Lakes. They're going to be competing with these big trucks. The 277 jobs they're bringing, they're not creating these jobs in Chandler. They are bringing them from the other warehouses. I yield my time.
Any questions to the speaker? Okay. Anybody else would like to speak on this item? Staff, can you address the question in terms of the building being changed? If Ferguson decided to vacate in terms of, or not build what's been proposed in the site?
I think I almost heard two questions there. So if Ferguson builds this facility, and let's say they go through phase one and phase two, and they've built out the entire site, and then their business model changes and Ferguson leaves, the property remains built in that condition, and it remains zoned for PAD for the list of uses that the applicant pushed up on the screen a little while ago. A different user could come in, and if they fit that list of uses, yes, another user could come in and reuse that building. If Ferguson, this gets approved and Ferguson doesn't build, then could something else be brought in, come in and be proposed? Absolutely. But it would get, it would get kind of viewed through the as-good-or-better and substantial conformance lens for approval. Things that are outside of those lane lines would come back through this process for reapproval.
Thank you. Okay. Would the applicant like to come back up and do any final comments?
Chair members of the commission, one of the things I just want to emphasize, and if you look at the airpark area plan, and I'm glad that's up, again, this is a plan that's been around since 1998. I've had the opportunity I've had the opportunity to work on lots of zoning cases, as well as our office, within this airpark area plan. And for by and large, the area has developed consistent with that vision that was shared back in 1998. And this certainly is in keeping with that plan and is the exact type of development that is a good neighbor to a wastewater treatment facility and a solid waste recycling facility. Certainly understand and appreciate the comments for maybe an office-type user or retail. Again, when we look in context of the surrounding area and what's there now, I don't see a lot of offices wanting to be located near a city facility. Same thing with retail. Retail at mid-block is not very successful. And that leads kind of to the follow-up question on traffic. The way that traffic is looked at, it's not looked at by business-specific type things. When traffic engineers look at it, they look at it based on typically the International Transportation Engineers Guide that lists various categories and lists industrial warehouse in various uses, not getting specifics into business and stuff like that. And so that's the best guide that we have as applicants, that the city has in reviewing things to determine the impact that a development will have on a given area. I would anecdotally state that an office-type development or a retail-type development would generate two and maybe three times the amount of traffic that this type of development will generate. Short of it being an entire self-storage facility, I'm not sure I know of a lower use generator. When you look at the spectrum of potential uses that are out there, industrial is low on the use. And so, again, we do believe we are buffered from the adjacent area. And again, we are consistent with what everybody has envisioned this area to be. And so we'd request your recommendation for approval.
Any questions to the applicant? Commissioner Rose?
Through the chair. It's not so much a question, but I think I'll make a comment since we have Brennan up here and the Chandler residents are here. And anytime the residents come out, and what happened last year, we can look back on that. Unfortunately, there was a lot of misunderstanding. But, you know, I'm speaking from a true Chandler native standpoint. I've been here since about 1978. This is some of the prettiest land, you know, that Chandler has, really does have. So for to see, to kind of see what the general plan has envisioned and where Chandler's come since then, I've always been, you know, rather resistant myself to see Chandler literally blow up and be one of the best, it's probably the best city in the state, I think. And so I just want to try and, you know, put some people's mind at ease as a recommending body. And last year, kind of the way that, I guess I would say it snowballed because I watched it very closely, although we weren't really that involved up here with what happened. I just want to clarify that. So the city of Chandler, this is the plan, and I'm very confident, and I've raised my family here, that this is going to be a really good use, and you're going to see large, large benefits from being residents of Chandler. There will be retail coming down in that area. And in terms of traffic, traffic's going to increase, but these are some of the biggest roads we have. And we have some of the finest, you know, police and emergency crews out there that are going to be policing it. So this growth, from, in the real estate standpoint, from where I'm coming from, I've worked with some of the most successful ones in Chandler, and the property values are only going to go up. And we've talked to a lot of different brokerages and experts. And with the growth through the price corridor and then Chandler Airport, these are the top job hubs in the state. So I would just encourage residents to hang strong. And I think you're going to really see a lot of amazing things still to come in the city of Chandler.
Through the chair. Brennan, you had showed on a slide a while back where the traffic flow for the project in that area was additional 632 cars one way, and I think 947 was the total. There was a figure of about 1% increase in there. Do you remember the total traffic flow of that area based on those stats?
Through the chair, Commissioner Everly, I want to make sure I understand your question. Are you asking me what do I know exists traffic-wise on, say, Queen Creek today versus what we're adding to it? I want to make sure I...
The slide...
This was if...
The slide indicated that there was an increase of traffic flow. I don't know if you recall that specific slide. And I don't recall what page it was on. There was like 87 pages or something.
Is it this slide?
Let me get there.
These aren't the fastest monitors.
Oh.
Yeah, that was it. So my question was, 1% increase, what are the actual traffic flow numbers for that area on a daily basis?
Through the chair, Commissioner Everly, in terms of where things sit today in terms of volume, I think that's the question that's being asked of me.
Yes.
Queen Creek Road currently has, if you'll bear with me, let me get to the right page in the traffic report. In terms of the capacity of Queen Creek Road today and what it operates at, it's right around 16,800 trips is the current capacity of, excuse me, is the current volume of traffic that occurs on Queen Creek Road today. This is a really good slide to, I think that it answers your question in terms of the level of service, but it illustrates the point that you asked. That top box there that says without the development, that's the capacity and level of service of people traveling on it. And you can see there that on Queen Creek Road, it's roughly 16,854 trips. Of the total volume, that represents 33% of the overall capacity that's being used with those trips. The slide or the box below that with the development, you can see in that column, six lane volume, you can see what it will increase with this development. Off to the right, I've tried to summarize those increases, and you can see what those are in green, depending on which way the vehicle is going.
So the 1% number was based on the max capacity of that particular piece of Queen Creek, or McQueen?
Through the chair, Commissioner Everly, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to the applicant? If not, we can close the floor. Thank you, Brennan.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion from the commission? Or I'll entertain a motion if there's no discussion. Commissioner Kimball?
Through the chair. I just have a question, I guess. It's our responsibility on navigation as the commission to make sure that the plans being proposed fits the criteria of all the various components of the commission's plans that have been presented. Is that correct? And I certainly appreciate the comments from the audience and the passion, but that's our obligation, make sure that what is being presented fits what is the criteria that...
Kevin, you want to address that?
Is that my correct understanding, staff?
Chairman, planning commissioners, yeah. So you're charged to look at a request and then kind of secondary vet it through the general plan and any applicable area plans. And then kind of next step, take it through the lens of, does it comply with our development standards and current precedent and then level of expectation? This is a public hearing, and so it's the opportunity for the public to offer input to, and commission to kind of go through, just like we did tonight, kind of a dialogue of the different aspects of whether it's specifics about the request or things that the neighbors have brought to the attention, and then act on it. And that's, so you guys are, you're absolutely correct, and it's just higher level of detail, I guess.
Thank you.
Commissioner Club?
I had a clarification, or like a clarification from staff. And I'm going off of memory here, so forgive me if, or please correct me if I say anything incorrect. Looking back on the, a lot of discussion tonight about the Ryan property to the east. And I remember when that came through years or so ago. And if it's my understanding, or my memory is certainly right, that had already been approved for industrial use, several buildings, quite a few, several, a few hundred truck bays, if I remember correctly. And then the Ryan Company came back in with a new use, new design. That's what was canceled, or that's what was proposed. Council denied it, so then it reverted back to the original zoning. Am I correct in that?
Chairman, Commissioner, so just to make sure that the question kind of is in line with something kind of related to tonight. I'm guessing what you're asking is, how did that path go? And is there a correlation to tonight's path, maybe?
Where I'm going with it is several of the comments that I heard from residents are fearful of, they view what happened there as kind of a bait and switch. I'm paraphrasing. And I'm also assuming that they're worried about possibly something happening with this project. Whereas this doesn't have a fallback design or fallback zoning approval like that one did, that they'd have to worry about something, you know, bigger or larger or whatever. Kind of two different animals. That's kind of where I'm going with this.
Good question. So correlating tonight's request to the Ryan Companies and formerly Chandler Airport Commerce Park request. So the Chandler Airport Commerce Park request did not have the level of detail and the level of specifics that this request does. It was a conceptual site plan. It didn't even have specific building elevations for all the lots. It was a multi-lot industrial development. There was language in there that lots could be combined. And it showed kind of an overall street layout within it, an overall consciousness of buffering along certain areas and things, but it didn't take down to the weeds, at least in the buildings and things like that, that this case is doing. Probably the most important part about that piece is that the 2006 Chandler Airport Commerce Park approval had a strip along the front of McQueen that required that any buildings in that area come back for PDP approval. That was the true meat of what came back before commissioning council for the Ryan Companies' request. Out of just kind of full transparency, we showed it in context with the entire site. So the entire site was perceived to be one large request, even though the PDP really was necessary for just however many foot depth off of McQueen Road that those front lots were. So the difference between this one tonight and that one, this one has a really high level of detail that is being approved. Say for the Ryan Companies' Chandler Airport Commerce Park piece, without that detail, the lane lines get wider. There's far more area for interpretation of what the building architecture is going to be and what the ultimate building footprints are going to be. That's not the case here because we've got an exact site plan, a landscape plan, and building elevations, and it really tightens up those lane lines because there's a lot more specifics that are being approved tonight.
Thank you.
Just a note to clarify that a little bit further than what Kevin said was that in 2006, when that was zoned, it was a PAD zoning on the entire parcel. And because they didn't have architecture, the commission at the time said, "We want you to come back for anything along McQueen Road." Because McQueen, any of our major arterials, we want the quality that's been designed. And so when that came back a year or so ago to us, and we only had a couple neighbors in opposition at the time, we had a couple people, one was concerned about the airport. And that was why that came back, was because they now wanted to put the whole plan on there so the commission can see it and council can see it. So that's really what happened. Because if that would have been zoned back in 2006 and there would have been no stipulations, Kevin, to my point, that could have been built without coming back to commissioning council. So, okay. So any other comments, or do I have anybody who wants to make a motion on this item?
Oh, through the chair. Yeah, I would just, you know, we don't want to reflect too much on what happened last year, but I guess I would make a note just for the council. Hopefully they would, it would maybe address a little bit how that whole system worked. I mean, especially since we have the core, you know, the core residents of Atlantana Ranch are here tonight. And there was over, I think, 300 people in that room. But I would just make a, you know, and what happened was, I'm sure it was kind of a shocker. You know, we got the new building coming up. Does it look great right now? You know, it doesn't right now. It's in its initial stages. But, you know, I think it's really going to look great when it does get done. But just to ensure, with the core residents of Atlantana Ranch, I think it's one of the better neighborhoods in, you know, south of the 202. Anything we can provide to them moving forward, I think would be beneficial.
Good point. Do you have a motion from anybody or further comments? Commissioner Pecow?
Chair, I make a motion to approve item B on the agenda, PLH 19-0042, Ferguson Enterprises.
Motion of a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Kimball. So any other further comment from the commission? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. To the audience, we are recommending body to the city council. This is going, staff, when does this go to the council?
Great question. Chair, this will be held at the November 7th, City Council at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you. So to the audience, this will go back to the council on November 7th. You'll have an opportunity again at that time to talk to the council about the item. Like I said, we are recommending body to the council. So staff, next item?
Probably just the director's report, I'm guessing? Nothing to report?
Okay, thank you. Members' comments announcements. Our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, November 20th at 2019 at 5:30 in these council chambers. With that, meeting adjourned.